Hi, I'm Peggy Schaffler here with you again today. I am glad that you're with us. I thank you for being here and enjoying these studies with me. I just want to remind you that if you do have any questions, you can email me at peggy@countrylifereasteron.com. We are on lesson number seven today. And if you haven't seen the previous lessons, one through six, you can go to countrylife.com and you can re-watch this series. So with that said, let's have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for all that you've done for us and being with us. We ask for your guidance, your direction, and for your understanding and for your wisdom that you are willing to give to us. In Jesus' name, amen. So in our lessons before, we've been studying Daniel 2, Daniel 7, and Primary Revelation 13. It's describing the beast, the beast of Revelation. It started out in Daniel 2 with the image, and then in Daniel 7 with the beast, the leopard, the bear, the lion, and then the beast that was terrible, that didn't have a description. And so last time, in five and six, we went through the identifying markers so that we could identify this beast. Because it doesn't do us any good to read about a beast that scares us to death and not be able to identify the beast or identify markers in history to help us. Now, you know, it's not good to put a day and a time because God says no one has the day or the time. But that doesn't mean that we can't watch and we can't know that the day and the time are near. So in Lesson 7, we're going to start out in Revelation 13, verse 11. We have this beast, this is a new beast. So the beast before came out of the sea. And we looked up and saw that sea represents bodies of mass people. A sea is a sea of people, and so it represents lots of people. But this beast is a new beast, and it comes out of the earth. And so it says in Genesis 1, whenever God is describing the new world, he calls it the earth. The earth was barren, the earth was void, the earth had nothing on it. And so we're looking at a beast that comes out of a barren land. So verse 11 says, "And I beheld another beast coming up out of the earth; and he had two horns like a lamb, but he spake as a dragon." Verse 12, "And he exercised all the power of the first beast before him and caused the earth and them that dwell therein to worship the first beast, whose deadly wound was healed." So now we have a second beast that is causing everyone to worship the first beast, whose wound was healed. And last, in Lesson 6, we realized that whenever Napoleon took his general Berthier, took the papacy, the Pope, as prisoner, he died, and the papacy lost their power. Before that, they executed people, they had armies, they had a tremendous amount of power, they were a world force, and they were purging the earth of what they considered heretics. And millions of people had died during that purge. And so the first beast was divorced from all the other beasts that had come before him because he not only had the power of a government, he also had religious power. So he could dictate religiously who you had to worship. So when the United States was formed, they came out of that and they made it clear in the Constitution that no one could dictate a person's personal rights. And so that's part of the United States. But this new beast is going to force everyone to worship the old beast. Now you'll be surprised at this, but the only nation that came out of an unpopulated region is the United States. If we interpret this as the United States, we see that it will back the beast, the papacy, and will become a force backing the papacy. Verse 13 says, "And he doeth great wonders, so that he make fire come down from heaven on the earth in the sight of men, and deceive them that dwell on the earth by means of those miracles which he had power to do in the sight of the beast; saying to them that dwell on the earth that they should make an image to the beast, which had the wound by his sword and did live, and had power to give life unto the image of the beast; that the image of the beast should both speak and cause, that as many as would not worship the image of the beast should be killed." So now, we've already gone through that once in the Dark Ages, when anyone who wouldn't worship the image was persecuted and killed. Many Christians were killed during that time. And now it says that they're going to form an image to the beast again, which is the joining of the religious and government powers again, and that the United States is going to be a part of that, forcing those people in the United States to worship the papacy. "And he caused all, both small and great, rich and poor, free and bond, to receive a mark in their right hand or in their foreheads; and that no man might buy or sell save he that hath the mark, or the name of the beast, or the number of his name." Remember in Revelation 13:3, it said, "And I saw one of his heads as it was wounded to death, and his deadly wound was healed, and all the world wondered after the beast?" In our terms today, we see the papacy coming to power again and being a world power. Revelation 13:11, "And I beheld another beast coming up out of the earth; and he had two horns like a lamb, and he spake as a dragon." That's the United States speaking as a dragon. Verse 12, "And he exercised all the power of the first beast before him and caused the earth and them that dwell therein to worship the first beast, whose deadly wound was healed." The United States as being in allegiance with the papacy and making people worship the papacy or this power. Verse 14, "And deceived them that dwell on the earth, saying to them that dwell on the earth that they should make an image to the beast, which had the wound by his sword and did live. So all the people on earth are deceived, and they're going to make an image to this beast, and they're going to think this beast is going to save them." Verse 15, "And he had the power to give life unto the image of the beast; that both should speak and cause, that as many as would not worship the image of the beast should be killed." So the United States has the power to give life unto the papacy, and anyone that does not follow will be under a death decree, meaning all who don't follow will be killed. Just as we saw during the Dark Ages. Some death decrees that we are familiar with through history are the annihilation of the ostracods, the Vandals, and the Herelots. Those who refused to follow the papacy, which started the beginning of the Dark Ages, they were killed. During the Dark Ages, the papacy segregated the Jews, much like the concentration camps in World War II. During World War II, our history witnessed the annihilation of the Gypsies, the Jews, and others during the Nazi reign in Germany. Verse 16, "And he caused all, both small and great, rich and poor, free and bond, to receive a mark in their right hand or in their foreheads." So in our world today, it seems strange that we would be talking about people being annihilated. Why would we do something that in the past we have seen has been so horrendous? But when we look at our history, we realize that all through Earth's history, people have been annihilated. The Hutseys and the Tutsis and all those countries, they annihilate people. Why would we think that it was so strange that this power that's been doing this all along, Lucifer, Satan, the great dragon, would change his ways? He is out to destroy those people that are following God, and he doesn't care how he does it. And so we have to ask ourselves, are we going to follow the dragon or are we going to follow Jesus? Jesus has already won, but the dragon is going to appear as if he's going to win. And so many people are going to think, I've got to be on the side of the dragon, I've got to be on the side of the most power so that I will win. But they may win here on earth, but when Jesus comes, they will be the losers, and we will be the winners, those who choose Jesus, because we will live in the new earth. So we need to not be deceived, because the beast is not going to win. Lucifer is not going to win. Even if we are threatened with a death decree, we have to know that Jesus has promised us another life besides this one on earth. This one on earth has to play out and be finished. And when it's finished, Jesus says it will never happen again. Verse 17 says, "And that no man might buy or sell save he that hath the mark, or the name of the beast, or the number of his name. So those that don't worship the papacy will not be able to buy and sell." Just like it was in World War II, when people starved to death. Verse 18, here is wisdom. "Let him that hath understanding count the number of the beast; for it is the number of a man, and his number is six hundred and sixty-six." Let me bring that a little closer home. All of us have seen in the last few months things in the United States that we thought would never happen. One of the greatest blessings we have in the United States is the ability to make our own choices. We can decide when to get married and who we will marry, where we will live, how many children we're going to have, where we want to work, where we want to go on vacation, what we want to eat, and what kind of a house we want to live in. And the list goes on and on. People from all over the world want to live in the United States for this very reason, so they can have freedom of choice, freedom of themselves without being told what to do. We have a friend from Pakistan, and he's been in the U.S. for 20 years. And every time we see him, he says, "I am an American now. I will never go back to Pakistan. Here I have a business, and I have a house, which I would never have been able to afford in Pakistan. In Pakistan, I would not even be able to afford a car. There is no credit, so the majority of people live hand-to-mouth, literally. In the United States, when we say hand-to-mouth, that means that we have a car, we have a house, we have children, and that's all we can afford. So we're living hand-to-mouth, we don't have any extra money. But in Pakistan, when they live hand-to-mouth, they live and lean to, and they have no car, and they barely are able to subsist on what they can make and get for their children to eat. In the last few months, all of these freedoms have been taken away. We can't go to church, we can't go on vacation, we can't go to work, we can't go to school. All of our rights have been taken away. Here's something for you to consider. Some states and towns have taken this to a more extreme level. I hear you can't fly, yet when you call to get a ticket, you can make a reservation and fly. I hear that you must quarantine 14 days after travel, but if you don't, no one knows about it and no one comes and checks on you. I hear you can't cross state lines, but when you do, nobody does anything about it. Now, there were some states that did something right in the beginning, but for the most part, they put these rules out here and nobody's there to enforce them. I hear you must wear a mask, but most of the time, unless a store enforces this rule on its own, there is no law, they're making you do it. Most people do wear masks to be sympathetic toward more vulnerable people, and because there is a lot of shaming if you don't. I hear that you will be fined if you don't follow protocol. There has been self-finding, but most places all over the U.S., there have been no fines for not following the rule. So in my opinion, and in the opinion of many others, including... in the opinion of many others, you have to look at, why are they making all these rules and yet nobody's enforcing them? In the last three elections, they have called for a vote to change the Constitution. Because it has not passed, they have found a loophole. It is called setting a precedence. Because we have many mandatory laws for the good of society, which include, but are not limited to, you must wear shoes and shirt to enter a store, you must have a polio vaccine, you must have childhood vaccines to attend school or to travel to certain countries, you cannot smoke in public places, you must wear seat belts, you must have health care, Obamacare, and you must have rabies shots for your dogs every year, and your cats now. These all seem like good safety laws, but because they have been allowed to stand, they have now set a precedence for making laws that they call for the good of society, which supersedes the Constitution. For example, these laws we may not agree with, but they say that they're laws, laws that they can arbitrarily set, and you have no choice in them. All these other laws, the seat belt laws and the smoking laws, they went through due process and they were voted on. But these other laws, you must stand six feet apart, you must wear a mask, you must have a COVID vaccine, you can't travel, you can't go to church, were arbitrary laws that they just put into place based on the fact that they were for the good of society, set from a precedence of other laws that were before them. They are already talking about refusing travel, jobs, health coverage to people who don't take the vaccine. Now here's something new. Pope Francis has written an encyclical that has a mandatory family day. Now that sounds good. Everybody needs to take a family day, and a lot of us don't, but all of us should take a family day. But do you want to be forced to take a family day? And do you want to be forced to take it on the day they want you to take it on? We've already seen that God's true worship, the Sabbath, has been changed from Saturday to Sunday. The reason that they are not really enforcing a lot of these mask laws, travel laws, is because they are really not intending to enforce them right now. They are only testing the waters to see how far they can go, how much they can get away with, and they are establishing new precedents. After all, this dies down, we will have a lull, and when the power behind all this evil has everything in place, the real shutdown will happen, and the people will have to decide what side they're going to be on. Are they going to be on Jesus' side or are they going to be on Lucifer's side? Will you follow the power that is being forced on you? We really don't know. When we're faced with starvation, we may make decisions that today we wouldn't make. This year on our ballots for voting, we were asked to vote on the right to work. Here again, you see this power, this power of Lucifer, under the guise of unions. So now we've seen this power not only in the papacy, but we see it in the United States, we see it in our governments, our city governments, our state governments, we see it in the governments in Washington, D.C. Now we're seeing it in the unions. The unions are trying to force everyone to be a member of a union, otherwise you can't work and no one can hire you to work. That's what the right to work was all about. And nobody hardly heard a thing about it on the news, but it was on our ballots. So to seize power of all the people in the world, they have to do a few things. One of them is they have to control the food and the resources. Revelation 13:17 puts it, "No buy and no sell." So if you can't buy and you can't sell, that means that somebody has control of everything that you could buy or you could sell and is not allowing you to do it. So they need to control the money. Cashless society will put all the money behind the power that controls who can buy and who can sell, and who who can have a job and who can't have a job. All the power will be whoever is controlling that cashless society. Control the food. Many farms have already gone out of business, food rotted in the field because of this shutdown. Our food supplies have been disrupted. We couldn't get toilet paper, we couldn't get, you know, food in the grocery store. They were out of all the foods. The food was there, but the supply lines had been shut down so that the food couldn't get to where it needed to go. And so this caused the farmers great stress, and many farms were not business. If you look and see who's buying the farmland, you'll see that Bill Gates is buying a lot of farmland, and Monsanto owns a lot of it. Small businesses have been put under. Now many of them are relying on huge monopolies, now most of us are relying on huge monopolies, such as Amazon, for the necessities of food. The only, this only furthers their agenda of controlling all the commodities, since these big giants, along with most of our news, Twitter, Facebook, Google, pharmaceutical companies, are funded by Joe Gates. They are not free enterprises. Because of the funding, they're told what they have to report. That was one of the great things that happened during World War II that we're aware of, is that all of the media was censored, so that nobody knew what was really going on. The government is passing out money, which increases numbers of people relying on the government for their subsistence. Antifa is a part of taking down our freedom. If they can undermine local government, and then the federal government can come in to rescue, taking over local control, you can follow the path of Antifa all the way back to World War I. It is and always has been part of world government takeover. That's not, that's history. That's not make-believe. Mask wearing is a mark, as you are, are you avoiding or not? In some states, fellow citizens are turning in people who are not wearing masks. Wearing a mask is not enforceable. It's illegal to discriminate against anyone not wearing a mask by our constitutional laws, civil liberty laws, and state laws. But it is still happening. It is not enforceable, yet people are having to go to court to prove that. The mask doesn't help, all they do is help set a precedence for the next round for the beast. Because if they get it to stick, they can put any law into effect that they want on your personal person, personhood or not. In Ukraine, under communism, they could take your children away. And they could do that in Germany, they took people's children away. And if we think they're not going to take our children away whenever this comes about, then I think we need to rethink where we're going down the path. The vaccine. The Great Barrington Declaration has been signed by 43,000 doctors, fighting against what is going on. And the companies forcing this scenario of vaccines have been, have... The vaccines have never stopped disease. Heard immunity has always been the stopper. And anyone that wants to study that data can prove it to themselves, this is a fact. Heard immunity is a fact, and the human body with the immune system given to us by God is the only thing that protects us safely. What will the mark be? Will they force a tattoo on you? I suggest not. While there might be a mark, the real mark will be the mark that you make of your own free will. A mark they force on you will never be something that you're judged by, by God. And this mark is something that you're judged by. So it will be a mark that you decide on by yourself. God never forces, never forces. God always gives us our own free will. Revelation 7:3 says, "Hurt not the earth, neither the sea, nor the trees, till we have sealed the servants of God in their foreheads." So now the beast has his mark in the forehead or the hand, and God has his seal in the forehead. Revelation 9:14 says, "And it was commanded them that they should not hurt the grass of the earth, neither any green thing, neither any tree, but only these men, which have not the seal of God in their foreheads." So again, we're told there's a seal of God in our foreheads. Ephesians 4:30, "And grieve not the Holy Spirit whereby ye are sealed unto the day of redemption." So the Holy Spirit is something that lives in our body, that helps us to make decisions according to God or not. So this seal that God has is something that is internal within us. And I suggest that the seal of Lucifer is going to be the same, so it's, we're going to be deciding for ourselves. Every sovereignty has a seal. God has a seal, and Lucifer has a seal. The kings of the world have seals that they seal official laws and paperwork with. In the old world, it was a ring sealed with wax, and the seal must not be broken by anyone except the person that it was intended for. Death would follow the person who broke the seal against the king's will. It was considered treason. We see in Ephesians, "We are sealed by the spirit of God in our forehead." I suggest this is our power of choice. You choose the seal of Lucifer by choosing to follow the world's law of power and force against God's law of freedom. You choose the seal of Lucifer by choosing to follow the world's law of power and force against God's laws of freedom. You will follow Lucifer because they will tell you, you can't work, you can't buy food for your family, you can't travel, you can't own land, and there will be a death penalty that will be attached to it if you do any of these things. The seal of every sovereign nation includes the name of the sovereign nation and the territory it covers, and its mark. God's mark and the seal is his Sabbath. Why else would it be so important for the beast to try to take power and to change the day? Lucifer wants his own day. He wants to take away God's role for himself. Genesis 2:3 says, "That God blessed the seventh day, and he sanctified it." That means it was set aside and made holy. You don't just change a day that's set aside and made holy. If I decided that I wanted to change my birthday, or I wanted to change my wedding day, I couldn't just change that, and we can't change God's holy Sabbath. Revelation 14:12 says, "Here is the patience of the saints; here are they that keep the commandments of God and the faith of Jesus." These are the people waiting on Jesus's return. And it specifically says they are keeping the commandments of God. Exodus 20:10 shows us that the Sabbath is the fourth commandment, remember the Sabbath day. James 1:8 says, "If you fulfill the royal law according to Scripture, thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself, you do well." This is specifically talking about the ten commandments, loving thy neighbor, you do well. I suggest the mark is none other than your decision to worship God in truth, honoring his Sabbath and not Lucifer's day. That choice unfortunately, as we have seen, will involve Lucifer and those following him, trying to force and starve and kill those who refuse to go along with them. So going back to Pope Francis's encyclical, this encyclical has built in it a one world government with the papacy as the head. Our nation will once again join church and state whereby people will be forced to worship on the day that has not been set aside by God. Those who refuse will be under a death decree. The rejoiting of the church and state will be the image that the beast is looking for, he will have complete control. When this happens, they will again attempt to rule our being. Something God has never done, he has always given us free rule, rule. Revelation fourteen eleven through twelve says, and the smoke of their torment ascended up forever and ever. And they have no rest, day or night, who worship the beast in his image, and whosoever receiveth the mark in his name. In verse twelve, it says, here is the patience of the saints, here are they that keep the commandments of God and the faith in Jesus. So that's a lot of stuff coming at us, but I wanna end it with just a note of encouragement to you. At Revelation. Fourteen, seven and ten, it says. Sang with a loud voice, fear God and give glory to him, for the hour of his judgment is come. And worship him that made heaven and earth and the sea and the fountains of water. And there followed another angel saying Babylon is fallen, is fallen. That great city, because she made all nations drink of the wine of the wrath of her fornication. And the third angel followed, saying with a loud voice, if any man worshiped the beast in his image and received his mark in his forehead or in his hand. The same shall drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is poured out without mixture into the cup of this, his indignation. And he shall be tormented with fire and brimstone, in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb. So I want to encourage you that, look up, God is not. We've already won the battle if we stay with Jesus Christ, and in the end, we will win, even though we go through hard times. Revelation twenty-one, one through three says, and I saw a new heaven and a new earth. For the first heaven and the first earth were passed away, and there was no more sea. And I John saw the holy city, New Jerusalem, coming down from God out of heaven, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband. And I heard a great voice out of heaven saying, behold, the tabernacle of God is with men, and he will dwell with them. And they shall be his people, and God himself shall be with them and be their God. God is coming for us, we are his children. We need to understand this so we don't throw away a promise left us for a mere morsel of bread such as Esau. Esau was Jacob's brother, and he traded his birthright for a bowl of porridge. Let us not do that, let us remember, God is stronger than Lucifer. We're on the winning side, we have, God has already won the battle for us. All we have to do is to take hold of that and decide that we're going to follow Jesus, no matter what. Thank you so much for being with me today, I hope you enjoyed our study. Remember, if you have questions, you can uh, email me at Peggy at CountryLife dot com. And uh, so, look forward to our next lesson. We've kind of finished a lot of the prophecy stuff, I thought that it was important to get that out there because of what we're going through. And now we're gonna go back, I'm gonna do studies on the Sabbath, so we can see the Sabbath, and we can understand that thoroughly, and many other subjects throughout the Bible. Thanks so much for being here, let's have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I just thank you so much for all that you've given us, and for. Already winning the war for us, for giving your life that we might be saved, that we know the outcome in the end. And if we could just hang on, we know that we're on the winning side, in Jesus's name, amen.